I have 6:30, so I would like to call the meeting to order of the Rutland City Public Schools. Please rise and we'll recite the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the secretary note that all our attendants except Commissioner Shemp, Commissioner B. Cavakis, Commissioner Studley, and Commissioner Keith Faber? You have the agenda in front of you. Is there any... I'd like to have an approval of the agenda.
I'd like to pull out the minutes of the previous meeting from the consent agenda.
Sure. Yep. Okay, we'll pull out the minutes of the previous meeting of the consent agenda. But besides that, are there any comments on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting our agenda? Oh, no, I'm talking about the agenda, not the consent agenda yet. All the who's accepting the agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Now, the consent agenda, we're going to pull out the minutes of the previous meeting, and there's personnel memorandum 625, and I passed out an addendum tonight of number, which is, goes to 625 also. So, do I hear a motion accepting the consent agenda with the personnel memorandum with addendum in it?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to take a minute right here to let the public know we are, like other school districts around this state, shorthanded. We are in the process of filling six paraprofessional positions. So if anybody is out there looking for a paraprofessional position, you can go to our website or go to schoolsprings.com, and we would love to have you apply for those positions. You might have seen in the news today that one school district in the southern part of our state had to cancel school because they had no bus drivers. So, school districts are looking for personnel. There's plenty of people out, there's people looking for jobs. Please take a minute. It is a very rewarding career. Thank you for my soapbox. Allison, the minutes.
So, yes, so two points in the minutes. The first motion, in terms of changing the agenda, states that the motion was, that the motion that was voted on was to reverse B, C, and remove the ad hoc committee action item.
Yeah.
And that was not what was voted on. There was
You're right.
A question of roll call, then discussion. And you stated that it would be left on as an action item. So the agenda that was actually approved, the only changes noted were central office, B, and C orders reversed.
Okay. Do you have that, recording secretary? Okay, thank you.
And then in, oh, they just aren't numbered. So, backside of the second page, presumably four.
Yeah.
The, one, two, three. Six paragraph down to the point of order was called by myself.
Yeah.
That was an amendment that was proposed regarding the mascot moniker. And it was amendment proposed to include moving forward as the Rutland Ravens.
Yeah.
And that was taken up as a friendly amendment and passed unanimously as noted.
Yes, it did. Yep. Okay. Anything else for changes? Yes, Anne?
Since we have two people named Cavakis, we should probably put B. Cavakis under most of the places in this minutes.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on the minutes? With those changes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carries. Okay, so just a quick review. You've got your protocols again in the packet. I'm not going to read through all of them like we have, like we did last month. I just want to point those out again for everybody to be aware of. Okay, is there any public input from anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Would anybody, okay? Why don't you come on up to address the board? Yeah, just right up here, please. State your name and your residence, and then, okay?
I'm Mary McDonald. I have children in the school district, and I live in Rutland City.
Okay.
My concern is the COVID issue you're having here in the city and the tracing that's being done. How it's being tracked, how it's being traced, and the picking and choosing the staff does when tracing. And then how the children are treated after or when they think that the child is exposed or may have an issue. I'm a licensed childcare provider at the state, and I'm also a parent educator for the schools. So I know that when a child is maybe infected, or you think that they're, for some reason, needs to go home, that they are supposed to be brought in an area with a teacher or supervisor, and they're not supposed to be, you know, told that that's what they're doing. They're, like, for instance, if I had Jimmy, who I thought was sick with COVID, I'm supposed to say, "Hey, Jimmy, why don't you come spend time with Ms. Mary, and we'll go do some puzzles?" And in that time, I'm supposed to contact the mother or father, have them come and pick up the child, and in the meantime, I'm supposed to sit with the child in that room, getting him something to do, playing with him, so that he doesn't know that he's A, isolated, B, not part of the group, and C, be appointed out. So in the meantime, when the mother does come, I'm supposed to, you know, let the child go home and then go about my day, and then, you know, do my tracing. And that wasn't the case with my daughters in school. I have two girls in the Rutland Intermediate School. I had a nurse call me because one of my daycare children had tested positive for COVID. We did our tracing and everything. I spoke to a nurse on Friday. The girl tested positive on Wednesday. So on Saturday, I spoke to the nurse from the school. We discussed, we did a timeline. She was concerned about my kids returning back into the school system. They were there on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. My girls don't have direct contact with the child that has tested positive because she comes after they leave for school, and then she, when they come home from school, they get off the bus and they go right to practice with their brother. So they don't have no contact with her, and I told this to the first nurse. That was on a Saturday night at 7:30. Second call I got was a Sunday night at 4:30 from a different nurse concerned. And I said, "Oh, okay, well, I'm glad you're concerned, but here's the timeline again." She said, "Okay, well, we're just gonna keep a track, keep an eye on your girls, just in case. If they come down to the nurse's office for something, then we're gonna say, 'Hey, Mom, they're coming down here for this,' you know." That was fine, but then on Monday, when I brought my girls to school, I brought them there at 7:45. They were brought out of class at 8:05, brought to a nurse's station. They were made to sit outside a nurse's office underneath a sign that says, "Sick, visit." Two of my children. There was two classes that had paraded by them to go to a special. So over 20 kids seen them sitting underneath a sign that says, "Sick." They were removed from class. They were out of class for over an hour and a half. I have documentation of that as well to show you that they left class at 8:05, didn't return back to 9:40. They were then, the nurses that had them in this situation were too busy to tend to my children, so they took them and set them in a room that has a big stop sign on it. They put them inside a room for over an hour. One of the nurses proceeded to tell them, "Get comfy, you're gonna be here a while." Didn't tell them what they were there for. They had no clue. So my two girls are sitting in a room by themselves, no water, no snack. They were offered nothing. They weren't even offered supervision, so you can't see them in this room. I have pictures of the room that I'm talking about. They not only have one of these rooms, they have two of these rooms in the nurse's station. And the nurse's desk is here. There's one here, and there's one here. And the children are unsupervised because they can shut the doors to those rooms, which is what the nurse did. And on the inside of those doors, there's a small little window about this big. On the inside of the doors are two pieces of paper taped to the inside of the window, so you can't see in and you can't see out. There's two exits out of that room. One is that door, and the second one is a window that if you climbed out, you would fall down. It's the catwalk, you know the intermediate school. There's the catwalk. On the other side, it's the same height as the catwalk. So if you were to fall down, you'd get hurt. So if there was an emergency, say, for instance, in the bathroom of that room, there's a bunch of chemicals that children could get into. And my daughter's quite curious. She likes to mix things in slime all the time. So if she decided at one point she wanted to play with Lysol and bleach, guess what, you know? So my concern is, is that they're not, the kids are not being ta, I would never put a child... If I did that in my daycare, I would be stripped of my license. The children would be removed, and I would, I wouldn't have a job. I would actually be charged and probably put in jail because that's neglect. They then opened the door and proceeded to tell my daughters, after they spoke to the head nurse at the high school, that they were okay to go back to class. Just go back to class. Never explained to them what they were there for. Also, I asked Mr. Olson for a copy of what your protocols and regulations are when a child is possibly sick or tests positive, and he was gracious enough to send them to me. And I'm reading through them, and A, you're not supposed to tell. So say if I knew you had COVID, I'm not supposed to tell Sandy that you have COVID. I'm supposed to say, "One of our peoples in our community that works close to us is out sick with COVID. Tested positive, we may should go get tested." But these nurses took it upon themselves to directly ask my children the same questions they asked me and use the kid's name. I didn't tell my kids what kids in the daycare tested positive because, A, I don't want to scare them; B, I'm a professional, and I'm not supposed to release that information to the public. And I don't tell my kids because kids talk innocently, and they're like, "Oh, you know, Jim Bob had COVID. He's not here." You know, and then everybody knows Jim Bob has COVID. So my concern is, my daughters also went back to, you know, school after all this, and at recess, everyone that walked by my girls asked them, "Were you sick of COVID? You get away from me. We don't want to play with you." So they had the worst day of their life for nothing. It's the treatment of the way, you know, this is being tracked. My son, who's
Just one more minute, ma'am. I'm sorry. We do them at that time. Yeah.
My son, who is unvaccinated, goes to Rutland High School. He was asked to leave the high school on two separate occasions. He had to stay out of school for two weeks because he's unvaccinated. And he can't get vaccinated. He's allergic to vaccines, has had reactions. So, long story short, he's had to test negative twice. He's had six tests since he's been back to school in over two months to show that he's negative. My problem is, is people are getting vaccines, and they're sending their kids right to school. Right after they go get the vaccine today, they're in school today. That's, that's how you're spreading the virus. The doctors are telling me that's how it's spreading. It's spreading by, you know, other ways of, you know, coughing and sneezing and all that. I'm just concerned of all the school time these kids are missing. They're missing out on so much because the tracing isn't, and all you get is, "I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's nothing I can do." Or, this needs to be, this needs to be handled. And I went in and spoke to the principal on Thursday, had a meeting with the two nurses and the principal and the nurse from the high school, and they agreed that they didn't appreciate how the room was. They don't like the signs. It's labeling. It's discriminating. It's segregating my children from the rest of the people. And it's flat-out putting a dunce cap on their head in front of 20 kids. So they said they were gonna change the signs. They were gonna take them down. They were gonna do some changes to the room. I told them I'd offer curtains myself. I'd bring them in. It's now Monday. It's now Tuesday, and they've done nothing to the room. They haven't even taken the signs down. So my concern is, is that if they're going to talk to parents, have meetings, say this is what we're gonna do, it, there's, should be a certain amount of time when it's done and taken care of. We're five days in now, and still has, all the signs are still there. Kids are still being put in sick sections and healthy sections. So I'm just really upset about how this was shaken out and how things are, kids are being taken, treated in the school system and the lack of education to pull kids out of class for no reason. It's an hour and a half, hour forty minutes of their day they missed, and then they've got to catch up on it. You know, and in my son's case, it's two weeks of school.
If you want to leave those pictures with us, and then I certainly, we certainly will be looking, we will check, we'll look into this for you.
Yeah, they're not the best quality, but, you know, they do show the hallway that the kids sit in. They show the chairs. They show the signs, the way that the nurse's desks are stationed. The nurses are quite a distance away. Shows the actual room that kids are in. I mean, there's, there's nothing for entertainment in there. They're in there for an hour and a half, twiddling their thumbs. I can leave these for you guys.
Yeah, please leave those for us, and then we can, we will
Do you want me to just?
You can just pass them around. That's fine.
Okay.
Anne, if you would pass them. Thank you. Okay. Someone else had their hand up, out back? Yes. You have about five minutes? Yeah, because we allow 10 for the public comment.
Hi. My name is Heather Howe. I live in Rutland City. I've spoke at the last meeting because I had concerns about my children being pulled out of class. I have four children, three in different Rutland City Public Schools, and discriminated against based on the fabric of their mask. I mean, the world that we're living in now, this is blowing my mind. But my oldest son is in middle school. He is, has 10 teachers that he sees throughout the day. Nine of them have never said anything to him about his mask. He's an engaged student, positive. One teacher decided in the last couple of weeks, he's wearing the same mask every day, that she, quote, "is not sure it meets her standards," quote. So because of this, she has sent him to the peace room during her class to sit until administration evaluated how they, quote, "felt," end quote. So this has happened now three different times. My child, who, all of his teachers, I've gone in, I've spoken, they say he is a positive, engaged boy. He's always polite. He never makes a scene. He wants to be in class. Has been sent out of class three different occasions for two hours because when the class ends, no one has necessarily figured out what to do. This is a boy who just wants education, and truthfully, he chose to be remote last year so he didn't have to deal with these options. We know remote isn't an option this year. I understand that. But he wants education, and he's blatantly been denied because of the fabric of his mask. He's a kid who has extremely debilitating allergies. So for him to wear, you know, different masks, he will quite literally sneeze 10 to 12 times, nonstop, projectile, like boogers everywhere. He's, it's coming into allergy season. Unfortunately, those haven't gone away. Last week, I kept him home a day, not because he was sick, no fever, no anything. The poor kid is sneezing like crazy, and already he's been sent out of class three times by this one teacher who is afraid to be close to him because of his mask. So I reached out to the school, and the principal has been understanding and caught in the middle. I reached out to Bill Olson, who is looking for more opinions. My question is, when did this become about opinions? The question isn't, is every child wearing the most thorough, the thickest, the most safest state-of-the-art mask? The guidance does not say every child has to wear a properly fit to their body and 95. The guidance from the state says a woven fabric that can be washed, that covers their mouth and nose. So since when are teachers, instead of teaching, now spending time discriminating against children based on the fabric of their mask? My seven-year-old daughter, who's had nobody say a word to her, none of her specials teachers, none of her any other teachers say anything to her all year about her mask until she lost a tooth. Kid thinks, right? She goes to the nurse. The nurse wasn't sure about her mask and said, "I think this mask is for decoration. Please take a different one." And then proceeded to ask her, "Do your parents wear masks when they go out at all? What kind of mask does your parents wear? Is your mom vaccinated? Is she planning on getting vaccinated?" My daughter, my seven-year-old daughter, came home bawling and still prefers asking if she can stay remote because she felt so attacked by this situation. She said she's scared to walk by the nurse and the principal. Since the principal found out about this, she point-blank has said, "I will go give your child a new mask every day." I spoke with her. I said, "I appreciate that, but her mask is compliant per the recommendations of the state. Covers her mouth and nose. It is a woven fabric. No one has had an issue. You don't have to hug my children. You're welcome to stay socially distant. They can sit in the back of the class. They just want to be present in education." And I was told point-blank, "Social distance is not enough. I would have to remove her to a room of isolation." This is a seven-year-old, healthy child that I'm being told will be sent to a room of isolation because, quote, "the mask doesn't meet their approval." So I reached out to the State of Vermont Agency of Education, spoke with a lovely woman for 50 minutes, who said, "You need to go to your school board." Because teachers, at the end of the day, you know, I've gone to the superintendent, who has said, "We'll just ask more opinions. We'll ask more opinions." But the question at hand is not, "What is your opinion on this? Is there a better mask? Is there a better mask? Is there a better mask?" The guidance set forth by Bill Olson is the Agency of Ed, which I have. Covers your mouth and nose, a woven fabric, cover here, the CDC and the Agency of Ed, washable. The signs on the front of the door here in every school says, "Mask must be worn, period." It doesn't say, "We're going to pull you aside and pick you apart and say, 'Look closely.'"
One more minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. But my son in the middle school, ever since I talked to his teacher, the very next day, his other nine teachers pulled him aside because she's now targeted him. Every one of those teachers said, "Wait, I'm supposed to look at your mask. Now come closely. What is your mask made out of?" Every teacher that next day, because it was red day, white day, he didn't have her. Of all, I said, "What did they say?" He said, "All of them looked really close and said, 'It's fine.'" One teacher looked really close and said, "Um, I'm not really sure how I feel, so can you sit in the back of the room?" And he said, "Yes." Because he's not a bad kid. He's not looking to make a stink. But at the end of the day, teachers are denying him education, and now targeting? And how many other children is this going on? So my question is, are we gonna allow teachers to literally pick children apart and deny our children education on how they feel about the cloth of your mask? The color of your mask? I mean, this is getting to be out of hand, and how many parents don't even know it's happening? My seven-year-old, I had, I would have never known if I didn't ask her how her day went and what happened in the nurse. "Why did you go to the nurse?" "I lost a tooth," and then she started crying. How many kids aren't telling their parents this? School is supposed to be a safe place. Kids aren't supposed to be feeling attacked and picked apart.
Thank you, and we will certainly take that under advisement, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, student representative report.
All right. RIS had a very successful turnout for parent-teacher conferences. Parents were offered a choice of virtual or in-person, which aided in the success. It is also, it was always beneficial to connect with and partner with families. The first of three surveys has gone out to families to get input on how we are doing at school and how we can do better. The link can be found in your email, on Facebook, or through your classroom teacher. We look forward to learning from your input. Thank you to our community for supporting our chocolate fundraiser. There are a few days left, if you'd like some of the world's finest chocolate. Northwest Star students worked on the character traits, respect, and self-control during the first month of school, and they enjoyed their first PBIS celebration last week for reaching school-wide goals. A visit to a makeshift pumpkin patch where every child picked a pumpkin and enjoyed a very, a very special ice cream with lunch. Northwest kickoff celebration with the Children's Literacy Foundation, otherwise known as CLIF, occurred last Wednesday in the outdoor classroom with a special presentation and a free book giveaway for every student. Northwest and Northeast look forward to a year filled with CLIF opportunities for our children as we, quote, "Open books, open minds, and open doors." Teacher conferences at Northeast and Northwest were held with teachers meeting with individual student families. Most meetings were held virtually. While in-person meetings are preferred, families and teachers have become very skilled at using the virtual platform, and participation was very high. Northeast School now has a Tyrannosaurus Rex mural outside on its south wall. This mural was created by Rutland artist Catherine Uygers, who has painted and installed many beautiful murals in Rutland. We are proud to host a piece of her art that is so appealing to our creative and adventurous minds. Stop by and see it, and just imagine the fun we are having reading and having picnics with the dino at Northeast. Thank you.
We've had a busy few weeks since we last reported from RMS. Maple House will be piloting our new Motor Lab Ready Body Learning Minds, which supports students learning through a variety of sensory input and output stations. Bridges will be opening up our school store, SnapCo, which will provide students with the opportunity to learn marketing, customer service, and budgeting skills. We appreciate all the support from RMS students and their families. All of our houses are involved in working on the Self and Place Project-Based Learning Unit. Students have researched Rutland both past and present, looked at community assets, and explored our role in our community. Students have participated in a mural walk, attended a sculpture unveiling, and listened to many guest speakers from waste and water management companies in addition to many other engaging lessons. Rutland High School is proud to announce that two of our students have been named as National Merit semifinalists. Callan Smathers and Zachariah Arshad have both been named. In each annual National Merit Scholarship Program, about 50,000 academically talented high school students are honored. But only 16,000 of them are named semifinalists. Students who qualify as semifinalists based on their performance on the preliminary qualifying tests are the only program participants who have an opportunity to advance to the finalist level. About 7,600 of the outstanding finalists will be chosen as Merit Scholarship winners in the 2022 competition. Allen Street has been gathering compost greens and browns from our community partner in preparation for winter and next year's growing season. Over winter, the cover crop, compost, cardboard, and amendments will meld together, creating a fluffy, organic, no-tail soil. Our goal is to produce high-quality organic produce while being stewards of the land. Students will be applying last week's Pythagorean theorem lessons as they square corner posts this week in the field. The pump track is surpassing all of our expectations. We have seen students build confidence on and off the track, engage in school, become fitter, and build positive relationships. Last week, Will from Powderhorn Trail Company was in for a track workday. Collaboratively, in a little over an hour, we repaired the surface by removing large rocks, shaping, and smoothing dirt. Students and staff commented on how fast we improved the surface by working together. Thank you. That's all I have for this week.
Comments or questions for our two student representatives? Oh, I have one. You lost me on chocolate. Who's got the chocolate, say it again?
Rutland Intermediate School.
Rutland Intermediate School. And how long is that going for?
A few more days.
Few more days. So contact the intermediate school if you're looking for chocolate.
Yes.
Anybody else have questions, comments of our two student representatives? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Early. The focus for me today is about the pandemic and our response to the virus. And specifically, I wanted to talk about the testing opportunities that the state has offered schools that they spoke about over the last couple of weeks, but the details came out on that last week. And we are trying to put this together, trying to get an understanding of how we might implement some of these testing opportunities. I want to give a little bit of a background to how the state has approached this. As you know, I think we ended the school year last year hoping that vaccination would help solve that problem and things were going to level out for the fall. It hasn't turned out that way. It's the AOE planning on how this would work differed with what the expectations came to be because, really because of the Delta variant. And the Delta variant has changed, changed how we've had to deal with this. We've had a number of cases over the past number of weeks that probably compared with how things were in January and February when we didn't have vaccination as much. So it's been a challenge for staff and for students and families, for sure, and the AOE is responding thusly. I do want to say, we are trying very, very hard to cover all that we have to cover and make sure that in cases where we hear of a potential case, so we address that immediately, that we try to do that efficiently and effectively and with kindness and care. So when we do have a case in the building that we hear about, our nurses are right on it, our administrators are right on it immediately. Trying to figure out, and you can imagine how hard it is to try and figure out who might have been a close contact over the, over the course of a series of days. It's a very, very big challenge, very difficult, and I, again, we talked about this last, last time, but I have to give credit to those folks for, for doing that hard work. But it's also a challenge for, for families because if people have to quarantine as a result of contact, being contact traced and finding out you were close contact, that's a challenge to be, have students at home. And, and we, of course, are stressed as a staff, but we're trying to work through this. And the result is, we've had very, very little spread in the buildings. So where we've heard of the virus spreading, it's been places So where we've heard of the virus spreading, it's been places, or contacts outside of, outside of the classroom, not inside the buildings. So there's a payoff there, but there is a cost. And this is where the, the state is trying to address that issue. So the state basically is, is hoping to address it by saying, "We're going to try to, instead of, uh, sending kids home immediately, if they're, if they're a close contact, we're going to try to offer some testing options that schools could, uh, use, and families could use to determine whether or not a student would be, uh, a positive or negative with the virus." And this ba, this system is based on what, uh, schools have tried in Massachusetts and Utah. I'm understanding that it's, it's working, at least for some of the schools in those states, well. Um, and the basic concept is, if you, if you possibly are a close contact, you'd have that opportunity to test and then remain in school. So there's three types of testing that they're offering. The first type is called Test to Stay, and it's a rapid antigen test. This is going to be the one, the, the type of test that's going to be the most, um, resource-draining for us or the hardest to implement. And it would work like this. Uh, if you were unvaccinated as a student and asymptomatic, you are identified as a close contact to a positive case, you would have the opportunity, if you sign, if your parents sign a consent form, to get tested every day for seven days with an antigen, antigen test. And that would happen before school starts. You'd come, come to school in the morning, get tested. You'd have to wait a few minutes to see if you're a positive or negative. If you test negative, you'd be able to go to school for the rest of the day. Participate in activities. Uh, that would include all activities except for interscholastic activities. So if, you know, if you're, if you had a game, you wouldn't be able to participate in a game, but practices would be allowed. And that happens for seven straight days. If you test negatively all the way through and you, you're off the hook and you'd no longer be considered, um, part of the, part of the profile. If you test positive, you'd have to go home at that point. So if you come in in the morning, go through this process, test positive with an antigen test, then we'd consider you possibly a positive and we'd ask that you'd use a PCR test to, to determine whether or not that truly is a correct test. And the PCR test would confirm. So that's the basic process. You can imagine if we had, I think I mentioned last time that we had, let's say, uh, I think sixty kids or so carry in, in RIS that were, were in quarantine at one point. And so if you're trying to deal with sixty students going through this process, it's, it's going to be a challenge in the morning. And it will take a lot of staff and a lot of resources to be able to pull that off. But that's what we're looking into and see if we can make that work. The process then requires that people sign a consent form to be tested, I mentioned. If you do not want your child tested, we'd consider you just, we'd use the same process that we're currently using, which would mean, uh, you have to go into quarantine for up to fourteen days, or you can test out with a PCR test after seven days. That's the process we use right now. The other testing opportunities that the state is offering, two more, are in-school PCR testing. So they'll give us a set of tests that, that can help with that. And take-home PCR testing. And so as we understand it, these will be available to our staff and students and their families to be more confident about where they are in, um, with the virus. It allows, it allows families more flexibility to get those tests rather than having to go, go elsewhere, um, to get a test. The challenge is staffing, as I mentioned. The challenge is the time and effort it's going to take to, to start this up. There's a lot of work involved and it would, a couple of different softwares that we have to use to, uh, to make this work. There's a lot of learning that has to be done. And our administrators and our nurses are, really have a full plate right now. So asking them to, to do this requires that we're going to have to take something off that plate. So we're probably likely going to be shifting some responsibilities to make this work. I also hear that the pilot, uh, tests that occurred in other school systems were not completely perfect. It didn't, it was, it was, there were some bumps in the road on that. And they, they also worry that it's possible that we will not have as many tests as we hope to have supplied to us by the state, because other states are, are also considering doing this. It's, it's an idea that might solve the problem of quarantining. So states are, states are looking for tests right now. So just to summarize, it's a big, big lift for us. There's going to be bumps in the road. It's not financial that's the problem. It's, it's staff resources. How much, how many staff we have that could help us do this. So I would urge folks that are unvaccinated, ages twelve and up, to get vaccinated. Because if you're vaccinated and a close contact and you're not showing symptoms, you wouldn't have to go through this process. So we're urging vaccination. I'll also urge, when we get these consent forms from the state, ready to send out to parents, if you're interested in doing this, we need to have that back. Um, I know as a parent, I wasn't great about filling out forms to send back to school. And so we have a hard time getting forms back from, from folks. So if you're in, interested in doing this, we'd, we'd like to have those forms back ASAP so we can make that work. But we don't have those forms yet, so I don't want to rush it. Um, so that's, that's how that process is going to work. We are working through the specifics right now. I'll say one more thing for superintendent's report. Uh, we also hear from the Agency of Health and, so I'm sorry, Department of Health and Agency of Education that the vaccine for five-to-eleven-year-olds is still in process and that they're looking to be ready when that, when that gets approved. So we're expecting maybe beginning of November that we could have that vaccination ready and there'll be regional opportunities for that vaccination for kids that age. So we just want, want people to be aware of that. That's coming. Okay? So that's, that's the news for testing.
Can you address the faculty meeting last Tuesday at the high school?
Uh, I will in, in a moment.
Okay. You'll, you'll, okay, you have that coming up. Okay. Anything else from the superintendent's report before I open it up for questions from you? Allison, can I just, I just quickly ask, what's the timeline?
After this?
Yeah. And then Allison, I'm sorry.
We, we've had to, we've, the timeline has started, so we, we've done the parts that we can do right now. Our nurses are taking a look at the software systems.
Okay.
Training that has to go into that. It's a, it's a ten-hour training, actually, to, to go through that process. And, um, we don't have the consent forms. W- once we have all that, those pieces ready, we also have to have a waiver that, to allow us to, a lab site. Then, then we'll, we'll, I guess we're, we're going to get tests shipped to us.
Okay. Allison, I'm sorry.
Um, in terms of the PCR testing, is that, would that be a quarantine in the seven-day mark? From the two types that you said could be done? And a sideline to that is what is the turnaround time on results? Or I guess what's the advantage of those versus?
Yeah, I got, I think the advantage, as I'm understanding it, and you're better at health than I am. Uh, because I, I, I'm, you know, I've become sort of a holiday.
Thrown into it.
Holiday expert, yeah. I stayed at a Holiday Inn last night. But, um, the PCR test is, is going to give a better, more accurate confirmation, right? But I, I understand that it, with a take-home PCR test, it just facilitates people being able to do it rather than going somewhere else to get tested.
Then does it have to get sent out?
It gets sent out, it gets mailed out. There'll be a, a mailer that it comes with, I think prepaid, as I understand it. Um, and then we're going to have, we won't know what.
You shook her head on that.
Oh, damn, shook her head, yes. We won't know what the results are. We're going to have to be informed of that. Because it, once it goes through outside of school process, we won't have that connection.
And do I have to wait the seven days to do that?
I, I think, um, that, that part I'm not going, I mean, I don't want to make a mistake.
Just wondering if instead of being an asset, it is going to be a hindrance because by the time you get the results back, ten, fourteen days will be up and the kid could already be back in school.
Right, right.
Just wondering what, how that was working, or proposed, I should say.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to misspeak because the nurses will correct me tomorrow.
Okay.
Anne, you had a question. Anne?
Um, I get the feeling that the AOE has been given, giving some scattered, inconsistent, uh, advice and, um, not really mandates, but, um, information as to how schools should run. Do you find, and they've even made mistakes that have caused kids out of school, uh, at, at least one district when they made a mistake. And they said, "Oh, never mind. It's all, uh, we can bring them all back." So do you think that they're more concise, cohesive? Do you think the information they're giving to you, um, superintendents, is any better than it has been?
Uh, I think, my answer to that, Anne, is that this is an unbelievably challenging, uh, how many years have we been doing this? A year and a half or whatever? Um, and it, it's really hard to figure out, to run this system without ever having, anybody ever having to do this before. So I think the AOE has been really good about keeping us connected. We have a weekly meeting with, um, Secretary French. That kind of, he gives us the details and then we, we, we spread out that information with our administration and nurses so they know what's going on. Um, but I, I, I think that, you know, the conditions changed a little bit. I think they thought that things were going to be good in the fall and it hasn't turned out that way. Um, and I don't know if that's anybody's fault. I think that they're, they're shifting now how to, how to approach this based on the way the conditions are. So I, I wouldn't critique anybody because certainly I can be critiqued to or how, how we, we've tried to address it. We, we're trying our best to do what really is our duty of care to make sure the schools are safe. And it's not easy. But, uh, we, we have that obligation to try to do the best we possibly can, given the information that we have and is provided to us by, I want to emphasize, by experts, by healthcare professionals.
Well, you're more diplomatic than I and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Uh, Dina?
Um, thinking about the number one challenge, as you presented it, is personnel administering this procedure. Um, and I don't know if we know this answer, but is there any opportunity to reduce the level of expertise of the, the people providing this service where it doesn't have to be done by an RN or somebody like that? Where, you know, when you do the Walgreens test, you self-administer? Can, we do self-administer tests for ages, I don't know, high school level? Can we have personnel that may not be medical or healthcare? Or even bring some S R funding, uh, people out of retirements that may not be RNs but can still help with the, the staffing side of it? And reduce the already stress, kind of stretched to thin, um, nurse, nursing staff administrators and other people that are running a lot of the day-to-day operation?
Yes. Um, this is a plug. You, you put in for, for help. We need, we could use some help.
Yes.
We, I, as, we also understand that there, you don't have to be a, uh, healthcare professional to administer this test. And I think ages, if I have this correct, ages fifteen and up can self-administer. I'm not sure why fourteen and below, I mean, it doesn't sound that hard, but I guess the nurses will know better than I will. Um, so we will have to have somebody administer that for the younger kids up to age fourteen. And it, but it doesn't have to be a healthcare professional. So we have some ideas that might make it work. With, even with some of the staff that we have in the buildings, doing it before school starts. If we can pull it off that way. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you for an uplifting report. Uh, Tapestry?
We have, we have two questions. I just have three questions.
Oh, yep.
Um, if, I've been seeing some professional stuff and, um, just to see the COVID thing. They're telling me that if you've had children the past three months and tested positive, whether it's that whole PCR test or the hospital or their office, after your ten-day quarantine, you don't have to get a test at all when you go to school. About the end of your life, the end of your day, in your school. Um, and I asked why, and they said that because after that, you still may test positive after three months. So my question to you is, if the child tested positive, but they've been to ten-day quarantine, they go back to school and they test positive again, what is your protocol? Are you sending them home again, or are they okay to stay in school?
Mary, s- sorry, I, I lost track of the, so if a student tests positive?
She said if they test positive and then you send them home and at the ten days they test positive again because it stays in your system for three months?
You can test up to three months.
You can test positive for up to three months after you have it. What's, what's our protocols for that?
Yeah. I, I think I defer to the nurses on that. I, I don't want to answer that and get it.
So the nurses would have to track if they had it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then, um, I know the PCR test is not FDA-approved, but we are using that in our school system to tell a child if they can come back or not. I didn't know if, um, that's something that we should look at as protocol because if it's not FDA-approved, shouldn't we be allowing our children to have an education so not have an education? Because like, they don't have an option. It's like, if you send a child home, they don't have an option for online unless the whole class goes online.
Yeah.
So that kid just loses out. And here, my main problem is, we're doing vaccinations in safety for the two percent of the world that can't get vaccinated. So the two percent that can't get vaccinated are the ones that are going to miss out on everything, life currently if we, we keep going the way we're going. Um, my second question is, um, or my third question, sorry, is the school system had a great system I bought last year. You pull your car up, you check, give temperature. They ask them how they're feeling, not me. Um, "How you feel? Young fever, headache, da-da-da." Check the temp. You're going to go, such a math, kind of go ahead. And they don't do that anymore. And I think whether COVID was just new to us last year, we didn't have that many cases. We have so many cases now. We're, we're just driving up, dropping our kids off on the promise theory that, you know, the, the honor system, you know what I want to say? The honor system that every parent's doing their due diligence. Some parents really don't care. They have to go to work and that's their only thing they care about and their kid has to have an education. So if they're going to send their kid to school, when I have text messages from parents that say, "Look, I know she's sick, but I gotta go to work." Like, "I'll lose my job." And they just send it, you know? So, yeah, I think we get back to the checking the temperatures at the door, you know, in the car, asking the kids, you know, stand in front of the parents. Because I was fine with that. "How you feel? Did you get a scratchy throat?" You know, da-da-da. Check them and send them on in. I think that, I don't know where that system went, but honestly, I appreciate it. Because, you know, there is an honor system in the world and we hope that everybody lives by that. But in reality, people need to go to work and pay bills. Like you said, it's very hard to stay home for ten days. For a parent who doesn't stay home with children, to stay home for ten days.
Right, I, yeah, I think.
And then lose all that income.
Right.
So this is my, my concern, um, is that, you know, the PCR test is not FDA-approved.
That comes from the AOE, right?
That, hey, you kid, your kid can't come into school and learn today because that PCR test, which the FDA doesn't even say, "Hey, that's, that's one hundred percent with work with that." They don't even acknowledge it. But that's the test that we're putting our kids education on.
And I think Superintendent Olson will address that.
Yeah, Mary, I don't, I don't know about the FDA-approved part or not with the, with the PCR test. I mean, this is, we're, everything that we're doing, we're taking from the state, from the Department of Health.
This is right from the Agency of Education.
That's really what we've done all along, trying to make sure.
Yeah, the Agency of Education, that's, that's the superintendent's supposed to put down what he wants all the schools to go by. And there's nothing in, um, you know, kudos to you, you're doing a lot, but you're, you get what you get from the state and then you just distribute that to your staff. And they're supposed to decide based on what they got. And everybody interprets a story differently. If I read you a story, we get a different story than what you got. Everybody takes something different out of it. So an interpretation email is not what we can deal with right now. We need, we need black and white, like this is the protocol, this is what they're going to do.
Yeah.
So I think that, that could become more clear. That would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did you want to?
No, I just, I just, I'll just reemphasize. And I, and I, this kind of goes to your question, Anne. There, there has been some shifts over, over time that the AOE or the Department of Health has said, "We should do this." Like the health checks with the temperature things. I think they thought, "That might be a good idea. That might be helpful." And then I think they decided it might not be as, as informative as, as they had hoped. So they, they said, "We can stop doing that." Um, but I'll say from our perspective, we, we have the legal obligation to carry out this duty of care. And we want to make sure we're doing it correctly. We're depending upon our nurses and the Department of Health to, to guide us and through that. So, uh, everything we're doing, and, and like Mary, you said, we're passing that stuff along. We are passing that stuff along right, right to our administrators to make sure we practice what the Department of Health tells us to do. So.
Thank you.
Um, I was on the Agency of Ed website today and it recommends for children specifically not to wear masks outside. It says children twelve and under, wear masks. I have the printout. Um, wear masks during the day. Unvaccinated, wear masks. Masks should not be worn outside. Um, right now in our schools, I know in Northeast, my daughter doesn't have any mask breaks other than lunch and all children are wearing masks even outside at recess. So is that per our Rutland City guidance that the elementary schools are to wear masks even while outside at recess?
I haven't seen that, Heather, that says you should not. Sorry? Oh, you can show me.
But it says, um, masks should not be required outdoors.
Yeah.
If you're Vermont as of September twenty eighth.
Right. So masks not required outdoors is different than you can't wear a mask outdoors. Right, so masks not required outdoors is different than you can't wear a mask outdoors. So we're, we're, we're saying that you don't have to necessarily wear a mask outdoors. So the sports teams aren't wearing masks as, as they did last year, but it's not, it's not bad practice to wear a mask if you're around a whole bunch of kids at a playground.
She's asking.
It says masks should not be worn outdoors.
I don't think it says should not be. You said should not be worn?
Should not be.
Or may not, are not required.
Masks should not be worn outdoors, recommendation. So I'm curious, why are elementary kids even at recess are required to wear them?
Well, I think what we can do is we can certainly take that and then we'll have Superintendent Olson look into it for you and then get back to us at our next meeting for that, for that discussion.
Maybe at least some rate. I mean, these children are five, six and seven years old.
Yeah, and we're going to have, we'll have Superintendent Olson definitely look into that, okay? Tapestry. Where's my tapestry person? There she is.
Hi. I'm Marie Gilman with Tapestry and Epic Programs and I provided you all with a handout.
Yeah.
I do have a few copies of anybody else. I am not going to project that because mostly I wanted you to have the information and hit the highlights if that's reasonable and acceptable to you all. So I was asked, as I did last year, to provide you an update of what's happening with Tapestry and Epic Programs and an overview of where we are, where we've been, where we're going. So that is what I will do. And of course, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity each year to share with you some information about our very important and supportive programs for the community at large. We've heard here tonight many times and you will hear from me as well, finding staff is an issue. Bold underline, make that jump up and down. We can't say enough and you will see how it is negatively impacting our programs this year. So we're really looking forward to that turning around in the not too distant future. If you have any secret pixie dust or something to sprinkle, that would be great. So what is, some of you weren't here for this last year, so I'm just going to hit some highlights on what is Tapestry and what is Epic. We are after-school programs. We serve the Rutland City Public Schools as well as three schools in Greater Rutland, Central Supervisory Union, Practor, West Rutland and Rutland Town. We provide safe, engaging atmosphere for youth after school. It looks different as kids get older, but that is our charge. And we have had 20 years of experience doing this with Tapestry Programs and roughly 10 with the Epic Programs at the middle school and the high school. We are going to go over tonight a little bit about what our programs are so that you have some awareness or more awareness of what it is that we do and how we do it. And ultimately, I also will have a not so subtle ask of you at the end. And it's something that I've been asking many people. So why are we here? We keep the lights on and to share a success story of what this can look like. It doesn't always look like this. We have a young student in one of our primary schools in the city here who struggles, struggles during the day with challenges with social and emotional context behavior. Sometimes, and this is one of those, we have the enormous success of having a child participate in the after-school program and blossom. So coming to school every day, feeling I'm going to do good things and, and be a kid and learn, struggles, but keeps coming, keeps working on that. And after school has shared with our staff at our site, the care that you give me, and this is a little kid, the care that you give me, the support that you give me, I am so happy here, I love you, and left the site the other day with hugs and love for everyone at the site. In my mind, that pretty much says it all. We're doing something and we're doing something right that is making an enormous difference in this child's life. As we move through the slides, you will see that that is one of the outcomes that our programs look for, that we can have that positive impact, also have that reflect back on the school day ultimately. So where are we? I kind of already covered that, but here in the city, we're in Northeast, Northwest, Rutland Intermediate School, middle school with Epic and the high school with Epic. And then Greater Rutland, we serve K to six only over there in those three schools. And the site sizes vary, but they average daily attendance between 20 and they can go as high as 80 kids in one site in an afternoon on a regular basis. That is not the story this year, as you will see. What are we looking for in terms of impacts from after or out of school? And the reason we categorize those both is because we also run extensive summer programming for six to seven weeks, seven weeks this year. Just a couple of the points there from state level data that parents appreciate after-school programs because it gives them peace of mind that their children are somewhere safe, being cared for, not watched, cared for and encouraged and engaged. Additionally, this is what I was referring to a couple of minutes ago, 65% of 21C students improve their participation and homework completion if they were in an after-school or out-of-school program. We are a 21C, 21st Century recognized program. And that is really important, especially in the pandemic world that we're living through and eventually coming out of. We want to help kids engage, participate, succeed in their school day. We're here to complement that effort and that learning socially, emotionally and academically. In terms of our program specifically, we did run a parent survey this summer. We had, I'll call it kind of record-breaking response, 80-plus respondents and 96 believed that their child had fun this summer. How important was that this summer? Huge. That they had friends, that they made friends. Again, the social and emotional relationship building, how do I solve problems? How do I work with others? It's all happening here. In the fun, it's not rigorous, it's, it's easy. That they were safe, that the families, the parents, the guardians were able to go to work and get back some sort of normalcy as we all had hoped. And that their children are exploring and growing. Another benefit that came out of our survey is that we had over a dozen parents express interest in joining our advisory committee to help inform our programs. We have never had that kind of response. We are absolutely going to take them up on that and take all of the input that they can share with us, how we can do better. Where have we been? So 2019 summer, school year 2019-20, we had participation highs, had been working toward that for years as a program, hit the highs. Then COVID hit and kind of stripped us of all of that. We will work our way back. We reopened with the schools in the fall, four days a week in Greater Rutland, five days a week here. We had really strong participation, really strong attendance, about 184 children every day. So that's census, daily showing up, participating in the program. In 2019-20, it was 250. So it wasn't where we had been, but it wasn't weak by any stretch of the imagination. Over the summer, we were in-person this summer for six weeks for Epic at the middle school, seven for Tapestry. We had 331 children enrolled, unfortunately, with 75 kids on wait lists. Some ended up getting in by attrition, others not, but that was the beginning signs of the serious staffing situation that has continued to unfold and tie our hands in so many cases here. There is a list of community partner programming that we have been cultivating and bringing into the program. That's not to say that our staff don't do amazing work. They absolutely do. And we're going to continue to recruit the best, train them, continue professional development and encouragement on their career paths of their own with us and beyond us. But we want to complement that, just like we are complementing the school day by bringing attractive offerings for kids to participate in, especially when they say, hey, I want. We will seek that out and bring that to them. So looking at Tapestry today, so where we had 184 on a daily basis last year across our Tapestry sites, this year we have 121. You can see from the block down below and the arrow that I drew, that is really entirely, entirely driven by staff shortages. We do not have enough staff to meet the needs of kids and families, needs and desires of kids and families in these schools for our programs. In Rutland City alone, we have 102 kids enrolled and attending Tapestry on a daily basis in our five school, in our three Tapestry schools. We have 55 on the waitlist. That's another 50%, a whole nother program. We don't have the staff to serve them. It's, it's really devastating. When we think about that and what we saw in the summertime and having to combine Northeast and Northwest over the summer because of staffing, we never anticipated seeing what we're seeing now. I know I'm not alone in having these conversations during the day, over the weekend, family, friends, colleagues. Why? Nobody has an answer why, so we don't have a magic bullet to solve that, but we really need to in some form or fashion soon. We have one of our schools right now, Rutland Town School, obviously the school is running, our Tapestry program is not because we don't have any staff, enough staff to meet the need and provide a safe, engaging program. Is it all doom and gloom? Absolutely not. We also want to celebrate, celebrate that we have had a Tapestry employee in Rutland City Public Schools and Northwest School from the beginning. Debbie Martezy, our site coordinator there, has been with us for 20 years and does an absolutely rock star job. If you have an opportunity to see the work that goes on over there and how enthusiastic the staff is, it all comes from Debbie and she has a wonderful time doing it. So if we can attract, retain and maintain folks, we have, she is an example, but we have others that have been with us for many, many years and find a lot of passion and happiness doing the work. I'm not going to review the Tapestry data highlights except to tell you that it does go to the need. What I want to focus on is we don't want to be driven only by need. We want to be driven by desire, by wish for the kids to be involved in our program. But before leaving this, I just want to reiterate, we say it, I share it everywhere I can, I will share it here. We do have financial aid offerings for families with subsidy, with co-pay, or if they're not eligible for subsidy but need some help so that their kids can attend and participate in our programs because we want as many kids to be able to participate as possible. So what's coming next? So we have been on a vision for continuous quality improvement. We all do that, we all talk about it, healthcare, education, everywhere. We're doing that in after-school as well. It is informed, it is based on practices that are gleaned from the after-school community across the nation and Vermont to make sure we are providing the most enriching programming for our students and for our staff. We want our staff to be as engaged as possible as well. And learning new information, learning new skills, learning problem solving, building relationships, building community, again, back to the partners and bringing folks into the program, it all helps to build that sense of community and belonging. And reflecting on what we've learned, what we've seen, students and staff, to really deepen that and, and build on that, build a strong foundation and grow from there. We will be, as we always have, we have work plans like everybody else does. We are really setting off on an ambitious, continuous quality improvement plan and working with all of our sites and our, our fabulous people to broaden the, the breadth of the programming that we offer by bringing other things to bear, by really beefing up the offerings and, and targeting the offerings of professional development for our staff so that they can pursue things and develop skills so that they can do more with the youth. We are raising the bar of the expectations and building on the strengths that we already have to foster and promote those further for the future and create programs that will be attractive and sought after by kids and by families and by folks in the school that want to refer students there. Again, this is where the Parent Advisory Council will be very helpful in helping us prioritize some of those efforts and strategies as well. So on Tapestry, those are my highlights to share with you at this point. Epic, I have two brief slides because both of those programs have basically undergone reinvention, largely COVID-driven. Things changed enormously. We really didn't have access to the kids last year in these programs. Now we do. At the middle school, we've been working, I've, I've had the tremendous experience of working closely with folks in the school, especially Megan and Erica, and helped support bringing the youth council to the middle school. We have new site leadership at our Epic program that also works very closely with the school administration and the teaching staff. So what that's proving out is we're attracting more and more kids. So this year, you'll see here that we already have 37 youth enrolled in the program. We have anywhere from eight to 20-something attending on a daily basis. Average of nine, that sounds like a low number, but what's interesting is if you look at who that is, it's not the same nine. They mix and match over the course of the week. So it's more than nine kids over four days being served. And that is because of the type of programming, the engaging approach and the caring compassionate staff that has taken over that program and is leading it forward. So we're really excited about things they're doing. Bringing in Vermont Energy Efficiency Program and I think, I don't know if it was this week or next week, they start working with Starbase to bring them into the program. At the high school, it's a little bit of a bigger lift. We also have new site leadership there that came in, in August, just in time for the school year, really energetic, really enthusiastic, experienced program leader. And so we're taking full advantage of her skills and her enthusiasm. We've started by making sure that we are collaborating very closely with the school to look at what their needs, what they identify as student needs, what types of things are they focusing on during the day so that we can, again, dovetail and complement that. We began with the tutoring and homework help piece. That was a very highly utilized program in the past. And as of today, in the last three weeks, we have 29 participants that have already had 48 sessions of tutoring in the last three weeks. I'd say that's off to a really good start. We have math, English, chemistry, general help, a couple of teachers that help with pretty much anything somebody comes in with. And soon, we hope, we will have someone that will be helping with languages as well. And soon, we hope, we will have someone that will be helping with languages as well. We will be moving, and we've already announced to the staff at the high school, that we will be working with the club advisors to think about what enrichment might complement, I keep using that word, but it's a very important word, what are they doing in their clubs? Maybe there's a special thing that they'd like to do to really solidify the purpose and the outcome for that club. We might be able to help with that. As well as, we've had several youth in particular approach us about new clubs that they'd like to consider pursuing. So we will work with the activities director and our site coordinator to look at those types of things and determine who an advisor might be to help get them off the ground with some support. We have also been looking, and last year had some great opportunities come to us that we just couldn't take advantage of, different enrichment opportunities that would be very, very beneficial and have been asked for by high school students. That could be, we had cooking, we had a STEM program that came to us and we had hoped to run it over the summer where students from the high school would be trained in how to deliver STEM teaching to younger kids. So our hope had been to have those kids learn that program and then come to tapestry and deliver that. Didn't happen, but it will. And we will get to that this year. And that will build on itself over the years in time and also create more youth with workforce translatable skills, one example of that. So very exciting stuff, big, but I wanted to share that with you and see if you have any questions about what we're doing.
Any questions? Charlene?
Just a few questions. What are the hours for tapestry?
From the end of the school day until 5:30. In Rutland City, we do have transportation home with the buses.
Okay.
City buses, school buses.
Great. And then can you just elaborate a little bit on the staff deficiency that we have? I know you're in different locations, West Rutland, I think Proctor, is there a specific place that's more short than others, or is it just in general, all around?
It's everywhere. That's part of what's so disheartening and not enlightening, because we can't figure out, and I know it's not just us, the schools are experiencing the same thing, I mean, this is really a global problem. It just hurts a lot when working on this program. But no, there is no correlation at all.
And there's a waitlist for kids in all these locations?
Yes. The only place we don't have a waitlist right now is one of the GRCSU schools, but we're not even sure we don't. Because when I say we have a waitlist, those are folks that have actually submitted registrations. We don't know how many are out there that are just saying, oh, I don't know that this is ever going to happen, because they've heard. We keep in contact with folks that were short-staffed, so.
I guess one more. Do they get a snack or something at Tapestry?
Absolutely. Snack, outdoor time, and activity or enrichment time. Yes. Nice, full, busy afternoon.
Yeah.
Fun.
I think it's a great program.
Thank you.
Definitely needed, yeah.
Fabulous questions.
Tricia?
I just wanted to say, I liked your start of your story about the child, because to me, that would be very motivating to have a child who obviously admires you and what you do for the job, because they obviously value the warmth and connection that they're getting from you, and that's really awesome. Another question that I have is, how about with, being that we've been in the pandemic, and I do think that, you know, mental health has suffered, and overall, just physical health. Do you guys do any kind of like, any kind of like challenges, maybe having the kids go out, like maybe hiking, some trails, like just kind of showing them what healthy lifestyle looks like and kind of giving them that motivation, that feeling of accomplishment? Do you do any of those?
Absolutely. Outdoor time is critically important, critically important. Fresh air, activity, physical exercise, nutrition.
All ages.
Wellness, absolutely, absolutely. Actually, at Rutland Intermediate School this summer, they decided to have Survivor as their theme. And so every week, there was a different challenge that the different classes, groups competed on, and every staff person was involved too. It really brought out the competitive nature of folks and the fun of the challenge, because no matter what, everybody won. But the hysterical laughs and the chanting and the prizes, it just underscored exactly what you're talking about.
And I'm thinking even, you know, having children like maybe like-minded, like introducing them to maybe five or ten K running events and kind of, you know, having people that, you know, they could identify coming in and talking to them and kind of, you know, having people encourage them. I know my daughter wanted to do the long trail this summer because she had read a book back when she was younger, and both her and her friend had read this book at the library and, because I said, what even got you thinking about doing this? And she said, I read the book and it just got my mind thinking. So like, maybe having somebody come in who's done that, maybe, you know, having books on that, I mean, any of that stuff, kind of getting their imaginations going.
Yes, yes.
What they can do, you know, now, or they may do in the future, something they look forward to.
Yes, we take every opportunity we can.
Good.
Without question.
Okay. Other, yeah, Allison?
So I guess in terms of staffing, kind of what are the roadblocks? I'm presuming one of them is that it's part-time? And, you know, and that, and aside from that, you said that you had a not-so-subtle ask and I missed it, so maybe, I don't know if the two are related.
I have to make sure we covered all the questions first. No, but I mean, to start from the end, my ask is really, carry this program in your heart, in your mind, wherever you go, whoever you're talking to, talk with people, talk it up. It's important that people hear from folks like yourselves about this program, these programs, they're not the same, sorry. And that will attract kids, families, and hopefully staff as well. While I agree with you, part-time can be a barrier, it can also be a benefit for many. And we've seen that in our staffing that, you know, I came into and have seen in the time that I've been here just over a year. We have a mix of folks that the part-time thing is perfect for them, and the part-time thing tacked on to something else, whether it's school day or another job, is perfect for them. So there's, again, no really easy identifiable what's not working here. Again, we have a lot of folks that have been with us for a long time. We had a whole bunch of folks come in and work over the summer and then go off to college. That happens every year, that wasn't an anomaly. You know, I think we're facing the same staffing struggles that everybody else is. I do not feel like it's unique to us. But I do think that the more we talk about the positives, the benefits, the fun, this is not, yes, it's hard work, but it's fun and it's rewarding. So how can we attract more people with honey? Is really where we're trying to go with this for now, as well as in the future, because someday, this will all turn around and we will hopefully be able to have unlimited capacity for the number of kids that want to participate and all kinds of opportunities for folks that want to come work with us, to build their resume, start a career, have a really rewarding part-time job.
And are the Tapestry and Epic listings under the Rutland City Public Schools site as well, correct?
Yes, on school spring.
Dina?
Just piggyback off of Allison's question about staffing, and I totally agree, this is a workforce crisis, is, you know, is not related, specific to any one sector. What, do we have any age requirement in terms of who can be employed? Can we recruit upper-class persons from the high school as potential, you know, people that can be part of the staffing?
So fabulous question, yes, with limitation. So we cannot bring on as program staff, because we are, in our tapestry sites, we are childcare licensed sites. We, you have to be sixteen, and when you're sixteen and seventeen and haven't yet graduated from high school, you have to be under the direct supervision of an adult, you can never be left alone with children. So it can be really helpful, and we have several of these folks this year, they're called aides in our programs by the licensing title. But that carries with it a little bit of a tie-your-hands, because now they can't be left alone with the children. So eighteen and a high school diploma is the adult recognized, working in a childcare license program requirement. And then our positions go by credential beyond that, if you have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, master's degree, and work experience to go along with that.
Do we still have any college students that are left as part of the school year staff?
Yes, yes.
That are doing it as, between, kind of, as their...
Yeah, we have a few, not as many as I would like, but it's not for lack of trying. We've done at all the job fairs, including at Castleton, we are on all the boards for the university, colleges and universities. You know, we network, we talk with folks constantly. But we do, we have some that have worked for us and are continuing to work with us that the part-time thing works for them because of their coursework, they're able to set up their schedules and work hour-hours and have some income along the way.
Okay, one more.
People have.
So we're talking about three to 5:30?
Generally, yes.
Monday through Friday?
Yep.
That's it? Okay.
You're interested.
Have you, my closing comment would be, have we talked to Castleton about doing internships in their education department, CCV?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, Superintendent Olson, enrollment report.
I have a question about tapestry. President, I'm...
Yeah?
So the high school has something called the YES Plan, and now, maybe it seems, I'm not sure the name of it, but it's like a choose, choose program at the end of the school year, where the kids get to choose what they want to do, and then they kind of go through that and give credits for it. So I'm wondering, I'm not sure if that's just for twelfth grade or if that's all the grades, I can't, I don't really know a lot about it, but I know my kids have gone through it. Is it all for, okay, so I guess it is ninth through twelve. I'm wondering, yeah, the YES Plan could offer, is that what it's called? Is that what it's called? If YES Plan could offer a program that implements what the requirements are for the tapestry program, so that kids could take that, you know, take that class and get the required, you know, trainings that are required, because I run a date here, so I know certain, get that certain classes, yeah, that, you know. And then the CPR training, stuff like that, maybe they could implement a class like that in the YES program, YES Plan program, and then they could get credits for that, and then part of the three to 5:30 would be part of the YES plan. I don't know how they could do that, but, you know, maybe that could be something that they could do, and then that would help out the tapestry program and it'd be, you know, getting the kids involved and it'd be, because I know some of the YES Plan programs are, they're great, with sewing, kids really don't sew, and I think this would help out many more, or something like this. Oh, I don't want to say that, but, you know what I mean, like, life skill, I'm just thinking, like, outside the box, maybe that's part of the YES Plan program, and then the kid have it option to choose it, maybe it's something that they could...
All right, well, thank you. That's a good comment, and I'm sure they'll take into consideration. Mr. Olson?
Okay. Enrollment report, theoretically I can be brief. This is the beginning of the budget process, and what our enrollment is, is part of one of the foundational decision-making points that we use for determining budget as well as student needs. So we've been discussing with principals over the last couple of weeks, and we'll continue to do that next week and the week after, where we are with enrollment. These numbers shift frequently through the first six weeks of school or so, I mean, they shift all year, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes in the numbers as we, as we go through the first, the beginning of school. So I, I just want to quickly point out a couple of highlights on this analysis, and I'll just go to the last page, page five, and just remind everybody, you know, way back in two thousand, two thousand and one, that was the high point for enrollment in the district. We were at twenty-nine hundred kids, and now in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, currently we're at nineteen sixteen, one thousand nine hundred and sixteen students. You can see there's been a decline over the years, and over the past eleven years, we're averaging about two percent a year. And that shifts every year, but it's, it's around that percent, that average. So we've had decline, just like the rest of the state has had decline over the years, except for Chittenden County. But if you, now I'm looking at page two and page three, just to get a sense of where the schools are at over the past couple of years. Rutland Intermediate, they're hovering just slightly below five hundred students, middle school, somewhere around two hundred and fifty students in that range. Northeast around two hundred, northwest around a hundred and ninety or so. And the high school, over to page four, has been around eight hundred or so for the past five years. Going back to page five again, you're looking at eight hundred, up to eight twenty, eight oh seven, for the past five years. So it's a, it's a little bit steadier than I think it was previously, but we still have a little bit of decline, and that's part of the decision-making process that will help us determine what, what the budget will be and how we, how we look at staffing. I think, I just want to remind people that last year, we reduced expenses, expenditures about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that was, that was in part through reductions. So as we go through the process again this year, we're, we want to be fiscally responsible, and we're considering, where do we make reductions if they are appropriate, while still meeting the mission and the needs of, the mission of the district and the needs of the kids. The same time we have this happening, we also have ESSER money. So it's sort of like this, we're talking about trying to be fiscally responsible with our local budget, and we have ESSER money to help address certain needs. So the ESSER money is very specific. When we're talking about what, how we can use that money, as Abby and Rob have said last week, or two weeks ago, there are real specific requirements to how that money can be spent and what it can be spent on. But we're talking about needs for kids who, in a sense, as I mentioned a few seconds ago early, that have not been fully, I don't want to say fully in school for a year and a half, or a year, a year and seven months, but they've had a lot of disruption over the past three school years. Right, we, we really went remote at the end of twenty-twenty, and then we had that, this, this year where it's been, well, some kids, some kids were remote quite a bit. And, and now this year, we're coming into the year where it's still a lot of uncertainty, because kids have had to quarantine a little bit. And so it just hasn't been a normal three years for us. Now, part of what we want to do with, what we can do with, with ESSER money is address some of the social-emotional needs that I think you mentioned, Tricia. And that's where some of that money has been spent over the last six or seven months, addressing social-emotional needs, some of the attendance problems that some kids have had, and just try to re-engage kids, like some of the, some of what Marie was just talking about, is talking about how do we re-engage kids and help them understand that school can be beneficial or exciting and fun. So we're talking about ESSER, and we're also talking about our local budget. The ESSER money can't supplant what our local budget funds, and that's the challenge of this. We're looking, how do we, how do we make sure we're fiscally responsible locally while having a certain set of money to address a certain set of needs? And that's what Rob and Ted have been working on over the past number of months as well. So that's kind of what, kind of what we're talking about leading into... So, that's kind of what, kind of what we're talking about leading into Ted's, Ted's report about how we start going with the budget process. I will say, the social emotional needs are significant. And we've had kids coming back to school who haven't been used to being in school. We've got to help them understand how to regulate, how to, how to work in a, in a setting where, you know, when they were remote, they could take a break when they wanted, you know, get a snack when they wanted. Maybe, maybe weren't, weren't as focused as they could have been if they had been in a classroom. So, all that has to be relearned and reemphasized as we go through the next couple of years and kind of get kids back to where they were before, so.
Questions on the enrollment before Ted comes and talks to us about the timeline? Okay, Ted, you're coming to talk about our budget planning.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to share an update with you on our planning schedule for the fiscal twenty-three budget. If you'll be kind enough to turn to page two of the enclosure on the budget, you'll see that it outlines four reviews over the next two months and provides you with a little bit of description in terms of what each of those reviews is intended to do. I'll let you, as you read through that, I'll just highlight a couple of those points. Bill has, of course, already spoken to anticipated staffing levels, and we are working on that in the context of enrollment and programming. You've heard about ESSER funding. In the, in the coming week, when we provide the finance committee with an update or preliminary outlook, we hope to be able to provide more definition along the lines of the work that Abby, Rob, myself and others have been doing to estimate what we'll be able to utilize in fiscal twenty-three from the ESSER grant revenue, as well as many other grant revenues that we rely upon from year to year. We're beginning to drill down into expenses by major category, of course, including benefit cost assumptions. Just for your interest, we're probably going to get an update in the middle of, I'm sorry, in the middle of November in terms of the anticipated medical percentage increases. So, we'll, we'll be looking forward to that. In the meantime, we're assuming approximately ten percent increase in medical plan costs year to year. By going through these first couple of steps that I've described, the ultimate objective is to come up with an estimate of what the net cost will be to be funded by the state of Vermont. In other words, our total expenses, less revenues from the federal government, less local revenues, we're leaving a remainder of what's to be funded by the state. And that's important, as you might recall, because that ends up defining the district's cost per equalized pupil, which is a significant driver of the district's tax rate. We're going to discuss at next week's finance committee meeting a range of alternative scenarios, because of course, it's still very early in the planning process. Then, come next month, when we meet once again with the finance committee, we'll be in a position to have far more detailed estimates, including updates in some of the key areas. One of the things that we'll have a handle on at that point, hopefully, is estimated tuition rates and revenues for the coming year. You might recall that tuition revenues generate about two and a half million dollars annually for the district. So, this is a key area. We also hope to have made progress on the specifics for proposed spending for information technology, as well as buildings, grounds and transportation. We're working on a timeline to refinance some high-cost, high-interest rate debt. And that is only high-interest rate because it was taken out in two thousand and fifteen. And as you know, interest rates have declined significantly since then. Melissa and her team will be updating and incorporating the Stafford budget, which we'll include in ours. And then we'll provide this committee with a number of what-if analyses to help indicate what the sensitivities will be. If you do this, what would be the result? Our ultimate goal then is to ask the finance committee to have a meeting in early December to review a proposed budget that incorporates the factors that I've described. Potentially then to provide the school board, if there's room on the December fourteenth agenda, with an initial review of the proposed budget or on any other date that the board may decide. But the purpose of that proposed review is to give the school board an indication before the year-end holidays of where we think the budget will be heading, give you folks time to give us further direction, ask any questions that you have before the mid-January review of the budget. Before I move on to the next page, are there any questions about what I've described for these four reviews? Okay, great. Let's go on then to the, the third page, which describes a number of uncertainties that will have budget impacts, potentially significant budget impacts. As many of you may know, two contracts have yet to be completed. These are contracts that involve, you know, more than twenty million dollars of annual salaries. So, given that, you know, those could vary, that could have a material outcome on not only the outlook for fiscal twenty-three, but potentially retroactively for the budget this year. Because the end of the day, when those labor negotiations are completed, we will pay retroactively any difference between what the teachers have been paid year-to-date versus what is agreed to in the contract. I mentioned benefit cost increases. We'll probably get a preliminary indication on dental, as well as medical, before the end of November. General inflation, we're going to have to make some reasonable assumptions on that. But of course, as you know, that is a, an area of increasing concern. Just as an interesting data point for you, of course, it's only one of many possible data points, but the district recently conducted its periodic competitive bidding for paper. And it turns out that the most competitive bid this year for paper was up eighteen percent over the most competitive bid last year. So, you know, I, I know everyone goes to the store and orders many things. And, you know, we're seeing it in our supplies as well. Also, an uncertainty are, is going to be the impact, the financial impacts of initiatives to implement Act one seventy-three. And many of you at this table probably know far more about Act one seventy-three than I do. But one of the important things here is, the intent was, going back a couple of years ago, to implement best practices for the delivery of special education services. Initially, it was intended that that would begin to roll out with impacts on fiscal twenty-one. That was deferred. Then it was anticipated that would be rolled out with impacts on fiscal twenty-two. That was deferred. Now, the expectation is, however, that these initiatives will be rolled out with financial impacts for the fiscal twenty-three budget. And we're in the process of defining those. But there's likely to be a range of scenarios involved. I can tell you that there are two factors that will have no impact on the fiscal twenty-three budget, one of which I'll, I'll brief you on in a short while, which is recommendations from the waiting study. And as you might recall from previous updates, the task force report is due at the end of this year in mid-December. It's highly unlikely that any recommendations will be included that would impact the current year's budget process. And then in terms of implementation of the e-finance plus financial accounting software that previously had been mandated by the state of Vermont, which I briefed you on briefly last time, Secretary French has come out and said that that rollout will be put on indefinite hold pending further evaluations. The, the AOE is exploring how to maintain a relationship with the service provider to provide services for those who are already on the software. But no more mandated conversions will occur for the foreseeable future, which to this district is extremely good news. So, let me stop there and ask if anybody has any other questions about the budget uncertainties. Okay, we'll throw it updating at the next meeting then.
No, I don't see any questions. The only thing, one thing we have to always remember and remind our people is, is that the CLA actually affects the rate. This, we're only talking the budget. We're only talking about the dollar budget itself. The common level of assessment is what gets factored in to the tax rate. So, we're not talking tax rate here. We're just talking strictly a budget item. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate your mentioning that, Hurley, because as some of you might recall, for the last couple of years, the CLA for Rutland City has been declining, which has had the, the effect of raising the tax rate.
Right.
So, unfortunately, as you also recall, although the district reduced its budget by its total cost, top line by eight hundred thousand dollars from twenty-one to twenty-two budget, the tax rate still went up because of the other factors, including that which Hurley describes. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Melissa and Bill, Stafford update.
Thank you very much for allowing us to join you tonight. I'm Melissa Connor. I am the director at Stafford, and I'm joined by Bill Lucci, who is our assistant director of adult education. So, we just wanted to give you an update on some of the happenings at Stafford that we don't often get to report to you on. So, I'm going to report on the daytime, and then Bill will report on the evening events. So, one of the things, in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, we underwent our NEAS decennial visit, which as many of you know is our accreditation visit. At the end of that, we ended up with sixty-six recommendations for improvements at our school, which, given the scope of things, that's not too bad. So, if you think of the timeline, we had our visit in November of two thousand and nineteen. In March of two thousand and twenty, we went remote, and it's kind of been COVID ever since. So, we just completed our two-year report. And I will say, I was a little nervous when I started because you have to check whether things are completed, in progress, planned for the future. And I was very happy to discover that we have completed forty-nine percent of those recommendations at this point, and forty-two percent of them are in progress. So, we have made, despite COVID, we have made really good progress, thanks to the efforts of our staff, of our students, of our rab, and just our parents that have been involved in different processes throughout the, the process. Some of the major accomplishments that I wanted to share with you that resulted from the NEAS is we completed a revision of our school mission, philosophy and goals. And we went through a process, a really thorough process with stakeholders that included both current students and current parents, alumni, students and parents. Over forty-six business members participated. We had representative of all the school boards that we represent, including the superintendents and the high school principals. So, it was a very inclusive process to give us feedback on our mission and vision to make sure we're headed in the right direction in the next five to ten years. And we've had faculty a hundred percent buy-in on the revised mission in early September. And our regional advisory board approved that revision in September as well. So, we are very proud of that. We also took on the charge that was put forth to develop a strategic plan for our school. And we worked with WAC leadership to help us develop that. And we started that process with over a hundred, I think it was a hundred and twenty different stakeholders from those same groups I just talked about. And we started with a survey, and we had a forty-six percent response rate for that survey. And for those of you that have done surveys, you know that forty-six percent is a really good response rate. So, we were very happy with how many people wanted to be involved with that process. So, we started that in the spring, and we were charged, the administrative staffer through our steering committee, was to take all the feedback from various focus groups that we held and to put that together. And we did develop a strategic plan over the summer. And that was vetted by the steering committee, members of all of those stakeholder groups, our faculty and our rab, and it was approved for implementation in September. So, that was really exciting for us. So, that was one of the pieces. Another thing, when we were looking through the lens of equity at our school, one area that was pointed out through NEAS and has been long known as an area we needed to improve was to make sure that all of our students have access to work-based learning, regardless of their personal transportation situation. And so, through grant funding, we were able to hire on a staff member whose sole responsibility is making sure that all students have the same opportunities to get to a work-based learning site, so they can participate in that aspect of their Stafford education. And then finally, the big development that was helped by COVID. We, we don't say helped by COVID very often, but it was through some grant funding. We were able to become a one-to-one computer school, and not just with Chromebooks, but with the technology that students need to be successful to complete the work in their program. So, we were able to get high-end laptops for our engineering students to run their software. We were able to get computers that our digital arts and video communications could run their Adobe suite. So, beyond a Chromebook, and with great help from the IT department in sourcing all those, because it's really challenging to get those, those items. So, those were really exciting for us. We've also developed some new partnerships that I wanted to share. The first one, as you know, we have an electrical and plumbing program that is very popular. We tried to expand it this year, but could not find an instructor to expand it. But the Department of Labor, who offers the apprentice programs, they have partnered with us to offer our students that are in our program the opportunity to participate in the evening classes with adults who are actually employed in the plumbing and electrical fields. And what this does is it gives our students one extra year ahead of their peers in the apprentice program. So, when they're graduating high school, they're actually about a year and a half ahead of anyone else. It not only helps our students, but it helps the employers because it's a cost-saving for them. They're not having to pay for their education. It's a commitment on our students because they're going to school all day. And then two to three nights a week, they're taking classes for up to three and a half hours in the evening. So, it's really a dedication from our students and our instructor, Chris Thule, who really pushed to make this happen. And it's being funded through funds from the Department of Labor. So, there's no cost to the students or employers. And all of these students, the requirements is that they do have to be participated, they have to be enrolled in our program, and they have to be participating in a work-based learning opportunity where they're earning apprentice hours. So, that's a great thing that is new this year. The other new thing that we have started is Brian Olson from the Rutland Regional Medical Center. He's the director of support services. He heard about the great partnership we have with our students in the health careers program and in the adult program, and he decided he wanted in on the game. And so, he approached us about Stafford students being interns in several departments under his guidance. So, areas of culinary, public safety, HVAC and their maintenance department. So, he brought team leaders from all of those departments to meet with our students just a couple of weeks ago with offering paid internships at Rutland Regional Medical Center during the school day, if their schedule allowed, after-school, weekends. And so, again, this was just two weeks ago, and we already have four students that have been hired on by Rutland Regional Medical Center in this role. So, that's been a great opportunity for some of our students. And the hope for Rutland Regional is that they will continue these students on and even support some of their further training that they may need after graduation. So that, like everyone, Rutland Regional has on average over two hundred job openings on any given day. So, they are, they are really looking, and we are very happy that they reached out to us. And then the final piece that I'll point out before I turn it over to Bill is you've heard us in the past talk about our middle school outreach trailer. So, this is something that has been a hundred percent student-driven and student-designed. And the idea is that we are going to have a middle school trailer, and it's an enclosed trailer. And there will be a station for each program, either inside or outside. And we'll be able to take the Stafford experience to our thirty-plus partner middle high, middle schools around the region. And we're really excited. The part we're not excited about because of COVID, there is a thirty-two-week wait time, lead time to get a trailer. But we have all of the materials, the students have designed their stations. Our students will be building the interior of the trailer completely. Our digital arts program will be designing the wrap, and they'll actually be installing the wrap, perhaps with the assistance of a local graphic designer. But they, it's really exciting to have that project. So, I have kids that were involved in the design last year, and they keep saying, is the trailer here yet? Is the trailer here yet? Because they're really excited to get going. But we're going to be really excited to be able to bring that, not only to middle school, but to community events as well. So, those are some of the fun things that are happening during the day. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lucci to talk about the evening.
Thanks. I want to thank Ann for being the conduit to having us here. As Ann is on our rab, but she's also on the adult education committee as well, as part of the rab. So, I, I guess, if you, if you take a look at, I left this at everyone's place. This is, goes into the Rutland Herald twice a year as an insert. A lot of people say that the print media is sort of dead, and why are we spending some funding on putting something in the newspaper? But I think Ben Franklin would say that it's, it's still a very vital part of how we communicate what's going on, especially at night. A lot of people think that, you know, three oh five, when the teachers go home, that the public schools in Stafford closes up, but that's actually. schools in Stafford closes up, but that's actually when we start cranking in my neck of the woods, in my area, with the adult education programs. People who've been in Rutland for a long time know that adult education's not new to Stafford Tech or the Voke, as some people still refer to it as. And we were always, before I got there anyway, we were always offering courses, and still do. Some of the courses you'll see in this, in the insert, we offer courses in pottery, and we offer courses in jewelry making, and drawing, and some culinary classes. Classes that are more of a personal enrichment-type class or opportunities. But we've actually, in the last probably 15 years, we've actually morphed into more of a workforce development arm of Stafford Technical Center for adults. This report that I put together for you, and I've highlighted, you'll see in gray, and I wish I had known that the cost of paper had gone up 18%, I would have gone double-sided for you. Don't go against me when the budget rolls around, please. The stuff that's in gray are the things I really wanted to just sort of bring up. You know, Bill Olson has said, like, you know, the partnerships that we have, that we've created in the Evening Division, are really based on what's happening in the national and obviously the regional market. You know, the supply chain issues that we're experiencing right now, you know, there are boats out in California and on the East Coast that are waiting for trucks to be able to take the goods from the boats and distribute them around. I mean, if you go and look at some of the shelves at Hannaford's, you'll say, where is the stuff? Why are these shelves empty? And a lot of it is because there's not a healthy supply of truck drivers in the United States right now. And because of that, we've been doing for quite some time, all you have to do is see that billboard on wheels that travels around with Stafford Technical Center on it. Billboards are illegal in Vermont, but if they have wheels on them, they're not illegal. And we've got one that advertises our school, and our CDL Driver Training Program for both A and B licenses. And this past year, even during the pandemic, we had extraordinary enrollment in that program. We are generating a fantastic number of truck drivers coming out of our program, and interestingly enough, an amazing spike in women truck drivers, women who want to be truck drivers, because the state of Vermont offers a scholarship for women to become truck drivers, if they're interested in that. So we are taking full advantage of that $1,500 scholarship per woman to help subsidize their tuition. We have as a wonderful partner, Casella Way Systems. We moved our classroom from North Clarendon to West Rutland, because John Casella made us an offer we couldn't refuse. He said, if you're willing to move this down here and allow us to use your school and your curriculum to train in-house people for our company, we'll give you a free classroom. And the classroom is just an extraordinarily well-equipped classroom that we get rent-free. So we're running our program, the Stafford side of our program, on Saturdays and Thursday nights, and John Casella operates the other part of the program for Casella employees, who are incumbent workers on the other side of the house. So from last year until this year, when the partnership became solidified, we've saved between $17,000 and $20,000 in operational costs because of John's generosity in building us that classroom and partnering with us. You already made mention of health careers. There's a tremendous shortage of licensed nurse assistants, nurses in general. You'll look for some of the highlighted things of the partnerships that we're doing. Vermont Technical College now has two nursing programs that are based at Stafford that are operating during the day. They're both full of students that are in the ADN program, which is an Associate Degree in Nursing, and the PEN, which is a Practical Nurse Program that they offer right at Stafford Technical Center. And they're both full, and actually both with a waiting list. And just before I came down tonight, I was telling Melissa, they're interested in doing a long-term care nursing degree, starting next fall on Saturdays. So we will be the beneficiary of having a long-term care nursing program offered exclusively on Saturdays for 39 weeks, using Stafford Tech Center and up top. That comes through a wonderful partnership we have with VTC, and the Allied Health Program that we offer, a Licensed Nurse Assistant Program that we're doing right now. We've done Licensed Nurse Assistant Program for probably 15 years. Because there is such a shortage of Licensed Nurse Assistants, Tim Yurk from the Pines asked us if we would do during COVID, a Licensed Nurse Assisting Program. At his facility, he converted a dining facility into a classroom for us, and we, using COVID protocols, we went there with our part-time teacher, and she went up there, and no COVID cases. Tim had no COVID cases in that healthcare facility, even during the height of the pandemic, because of the extraordinary care that he took. The word got around the state through the administrators that work at the various nursing homes, that we deployed a nursing class in his facility. And I got a call from Randolph, and Gifford, and Menig, and Cedar Hill asked if we could travel to Randolph to deliver onsite LNA classes for them, which we did. And because Amy Martone heard from the hospital that we had done that, she asked if we would do an LNA class at Rutland Regional Medical Center, and we're doing that right now in a really, really nice classroom at the Lady Center. Really nice classroom at the Lady Center. We have a full class there of LNA's that are coming through our program with our teacher, and we're doing that onsite so that we can help out with their, as of today, they have 200 vacancies at Rutland Regional Medical Center in a variety of positions, not just nursing, but in culinary and a variety of other places. That partnership with Rutland Regional Medical Center is wonderful. We're helping them out, we're helping locally economy out in a number of ways. And then the last thing I'll just mention quickly is, and you'll see it in there, our partnership with General Electric Aviation. Right now, they have between 50 and 75 openings at GE that they can't fill. Manufacturing operations right on the floor, working on the floor, starting pays roughly $19 and change per hour, and they can't find enough people to fill those spots. And it's been that way for about two years. So to help them in their HR department, they asked us if we would do all the pre-employment screening for General Electric. So what we do is we provide them with the screening, it's computer-based screening, for the manufacturing ops. In the last two years, I've probably screened 700 candidates for them. So the only people that the HR office is seeing over a Colombian or a Wincrest are the people who have passed the test that indicate in some way that they'd be suitable for working in a manufacturing environment. So we cut that in way more than half for them, so that they can move people through their hiring process. We also do all of the screening for them, for their apprenticeship programs, they have three apprenticeship programs. This past Saturday, there were 14 candidates that spent four hours doing the screening at Stafford with me, to get them into the candidate pool for the apprenticeship programs that they've been running there for about 10 years. So they're wonderful partners for us, wonderful partners for our after-school program. Dan Roswell asked me to wear this new mask for iBots, the robotics program that he does after school. Just got these today. And General Electric gives them in the neighborhood of $5,000 per year to help with the robotics program, the after-school program that Dan runs with Forest Demel. So I just invite you to take a look at some of the partnerships and some of the things that we've been able to accomplish to address the workforce shortage in a variety of areas. The three sectors, allied health, manufacturing, and transportation. And we're just going to continue to move forward in helping and doing whatever we can to assist our partners in the region in meeting the challenges that they face with workforce development.
Questions and comments?
You guys sound like very connected within the community, and it sounds like you, I mean, my neighbor Brian Olson coming to you, but it just sounds like you guys are very open to new suggestions and cutting edge, and keep up the good work. That's good, that you're on top of everything.
Ann?
The bottom line, does any of these programs, the LNA programs, the onsite traveling courses, pre-employment screening that we're doing, Stafford's doing, CDL partnerships, is that generating any revenue for Stafford?
These programs here are generating a lot of revenue. I think last year, we built out General Electric, somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000, they pay for the services, and there's really no overhead, other than, you know, the services that we provide in terms of purchasing the tests, and we add a surcharge to that, because we build the inventory of tests. LNA, we make a tremendous amount of money. Forgot to mention, we developed a clinical certified medical assistant program for community health. We deployed that, we've done that for three years, and we've made substantial amounts of dollars through community health, because it's a program we designed for them, and they pay us through their employee educational account. So these are all, including in the CDL program, are high-tuition, high-profit courses that we're actually bringing money back into subsidizing the other work that we're doing.
And just to tag on, when we do the adult ed budget, it is incorporated into our Stafford budget. It is built on a break-even basis, but any profits are reinvested into the equipment that is in our program. So for instance, the welding school profits from that, when we need new welders, adult ed contributes towards the cost of those, because the equipment's being used by both day and evening, so we share the cost of that replacement.
Question, Allison?
So it's always amazing when you guys present, and the great variety of programs that you're able to run. So, and it's also wonderful that some of these careers can be landing spots, and some of them can also be building blocks. You know, these LNA's get in, they get into the hospital, and then the hospital can help them become an RN, and as you mentioned with the electrical and plumbing, the same type of thing, so that's great. Question I had was, how is this interest of the students balanced with the workforce demands? Are we finding any equilibrium there? Are we?
Absolutely. As part of our Perkins Grant, every two years, we have to do what's called a comprehensive local needs assessment. So as part of that process, we have to look at, what is Department of Labor, and the, you know, the statistics showing for growth in our area? And we also have to balance exactly what you're saying with student interest, and where is the interest? So we look at our statistical data around where have the applications been, and where are we seeing kind of the push? So for instance, the expansion of electrical and plumbing and health careers that we'll be proposing, we've been talking about for a couple of years, is based on five to six years of data that are showing that students are applying, and we are having repeatedly up to 18 to, with electric and plumbing, almost 50 students on a waitlist. And so there is a high demand for those, and so that's where we try to balance. We also want to make sure that we're offering, you know, programs that are breaking even. So when we're doing our budget, and we're doing the financial analysis, we're making sure that if we have a lower-enrolled program, the tuition costs that are coming in with that through our six semester average, covering the cost of the program. And that's a consideration we look at with our finance committee. So it is every two years, we're looking at that through the comprehensive local needs assessment, and every year, the finance committee is looking at that through a close lens as well.
Thank you.
Charmaine?
I just want to say, what a great program, and I can appreciate how much organization it must take for you to keep everything, all the wheels turning. But I think the best part of your program, I think, is you're building pathways to keep the kids here in Rutland, and build Rutland. And I think that's great, that they have a place to be here, because this is a good city to be in for a career, and I think it's great that you're connecting them with local jobs. I think it's so important for us.
You know, some of our work with our two school counselors, they're doing career plans with every student, so when every student leaves Stafford, they have a clear plan of where they want to go in the next two to three years. And having the partnerships with VTC, you know, particularly students in the health careers, they now can see that they can do their two years at Stafford, they get their LNA as a junior in high school, they can do internships at the hospital their senior year, and then the hope is that when they graduate, they're going to be right back at Stafford in the VTC nursing program, and then possibly continue on at Catholic or something like that. So we're really trying to, you know, show them, you know, these are opportunities out of state, but these are opportunities right here, these are the cost savings that you could have, you know, live at home for an extra year or so, and take the VTC course, save some money, and then when you want to do further education, that's where you kind of splurge for that. So we're really trying to let them see the financial aspects of all the decisions that they make, so that they're making a sound decision.
Anything else? Yes?
The Stafford Technical Center, do they still have the childcare that they used to have in the building?
Yes, we still have a preschool.
Oh, you do?
We still have a preschool, yes.
Yeah, I was just thinking, that would probably help out Cafes, maybe you two could chat a little, and those are the interesting students in childcare. I was wondering if we still have a little bit of interest in that.
It absolutely is, with a waitlist.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I believe now Glenn is up for the Building Committee report, which was in your passion, I believe?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Glenn Scott, as Hurley shared, I'm the Director of Building Grounds and Transportation. As Hurley shared, there is a robust committee report, but I just wanted to cover two important environmental regulations that are coming down or on the horizon. The first is indoor, the second is outdoor. Outdoors, there's, in 2019, the state passed an environmental regulation called the Three-Acre Permit Rule, which requires landowners to treat, filter, or contain rainwater as it runs off roofs, parking lots, impermeable surfaces. To this end, the state and federal government are providing block grants that basically help schools treat and come up with a plan to contain this water. So that initiative, it's called the Green Schools Initiative. Basically, they've selected a design partner or a grant partner that helps the schools select engineers. The Green Print Partners is the project manager selected by the Department of Environmental Conservation. In this project, they basically have three goals: achieve compliance with the Three-Acre Permit Rule, provide public schools with funding and technical assistance, and then educational opportunities with onsite green stormwater practices. So when things are installed, they'll also come back and provide educational opportunities, so that'll be a good learning opportunity within our schools. Basically, there's three schools that are impacted with this initiative. The high school, the middle school, and intermediate school are considered one, because they're on one block, and then northeast school. So basically, there's two phases to address this. The first phase is engineering feasibility analysis. That's basically helping us select an engineer to come out and assess the property, see what is the most feasible option, an engineering option, to handle the stormwater. The preference is to treat it onsite, so detention ponds or filtration systems. What they don't want, the idea behind this, is that we don't have pollutants running into the Otter Creek and ultimately into the Lake Champlain Valley. Phase two, or phase one is currently funded by the state, so all the engineering analysis, all the selection and technical assistance is funded. Phase two is not yet currently funded, but there's hope and indications that it may be funded. Once the engineering study is done, we'll have five years to complete that construction, so hopefully funding will come down the road for that. And ultimately, there's annual inspections and maintenance and a five-year recertification for that project. So if you drive by the high school on Stratton Road, you kind of see a detention pond there. We're hopeful that part of that is already going to go into the analysis and treat a lot of stormwater that we see off of the parking lots there. Before I move on, any questions on that?
Questions?
All right. The second one was passed this past year during Act 70- The second one was passed this past year during Act 74, which basically requires testing in all public schools for PCBs. PCBs are basically polychlorinated biphenols. Nailed it. Any construction or renovation done between 1950 and 1979 contains these compounds. It's basically a health, cancer, potentially cancer-causing agent. It was found in caulk, glues, plastics, and light ballasts. So basically, that's all of our schools except for the high school that may be impacted. The good news, the good news is, is that during our 2010 lighting project, all of our ballasts were removed from all of our schools and they were safely recycled. So that is one of the biggest risks with PCBs is our light ballast. So those have all been removed already. So that's, that's checklist. So where we are from here, basically, there's a lot more guidance to come, but that we've, we've had to complete a survey stating that our schools are within that age range and then we're expecting more guidance once they review the, the age ranges in construction and then they'll want to do a further assessment on construction projects that were completed. What will come next is air quality testing. So it'll just be a generalized testing of the air with, throughout those schools. That is funded by the state. If concentrations are above applicable levels, we'll get further guidance on how to address that and how to zero in and find where those PCBs may be determined. The hope is that if it's found in a particular area of the building or concentration levels are high, we will, may have to close off that area of the building, but their goal is not to have to completely close down schools in general. So more, again, more, a lot more information is coming on this. As this process starts, we will be communicating with families and, and staff about, you know, next steps. But this is very early in the process, but it is something that we'll, we'll get more information on. And I think that's it for now. Abby and Rob are going to share more on ESSER. There's some facility projects that are on the horizon as well, but they've got all that down the road.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Weighted study update? Back to Ted.
Just have a brief update for you on a couple of recent events and some plans regarding the waiting study task force. On page two of the enclosure, I mentioned to you that back on September 30, the task force, not the task force, the coalition, held a press conference on the steps of the Vermont State Capitol. That was very positive. I've shown you a couple of quotes from several of the participants. They were five speakers at that, at that event. And so we're trying to communicate the message of student equity through a number of different channels of communication. Now, the task force, and I made brief mention of this at your last meeting, the task force is currently considering taking a hybrid approach. And what that means is they're considering doing a combination of not only implementation of the weights as recommended by the UVM Rutgers study, but also in some cases, particularly with the possibility of ELL students utilizing categorical aid grants in lieu of the recommended weighting factor. Professor Tammy Colby, who was one of the lead scholars and authors behind the study, has observed that using categorical aid is like, would be likely to add additional bureaucracy, which of course has caused that, you know, is not the most efficient use of funds. And many have pointed out that relying upon categorical aid could make planning more difficult. We've discussed some of the reasons for that with you before, especially to the extent that there's turnover in legislators and different perspectives. I will say, as regards categorical aid, as some of you may know, that the state does currently use categorical aid in a few areas, such as transportation aid and, and for compensation of some special educational services. Those have, those have particularities in terms of those activities, but again, it's, it's not a general approach that many people would recommend. I, I can tell you that at a very recent task force meeting, in fact, just this last Friday on October 8, the Joint Fiscal Office did propose, as part of their ideas for categorical aid approach to ELL, a metrics-driven approach on how to allocate that aid. And I'll, and I'll spare you the details at this point, but you know, what they are trying to do is to take away some of the subjectivity that can normally categorize a, characterize a categorical grant approach. Do you have any questions about either the press conference or the task force meetings or the hybrid plans that are being discussed?
Questions? Comments?
Okay. If I may ask you to turn to the next page. There is a second and a final public hearing scheduled for October 29 from 11 to 1. This is, is going to be having about 50 different speakers. Anybody from the Vermont community is welcome to sign up. We have several members of the Rutland City Public Schools community who have already signed up to offer their remarks. In most cases, it'll be via Zoom. At the first public task force meeting, we had almost 40 speakers, 100% of whom were strongly in favor of implementing the UVM study weights as recommended. So that was a very positive turnout. It would, of course, be beneficial from our standpoint if the task force will continue to hear as many voices as possible for those who are in favor of implementing the UVM weights and of course, the reasons for their support. We, we acted upon the, the school board's vote at the last meeting to authorize a $3,000 contribution so that the coalition can continue its efforts and we have made that contribution. Ongoing efforts are going to consider, include monitoring the task force deliberations and then, very importantly, monitoring and trying to communicate regarding what type of legislation may be forthcoming in the new legislative session in 2022. And that's where the rubber will really hit the road. So that's where we are at this point and we'll keep you posted on any new developments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Oh, yeah, Allison, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I guess one more comment regarding the use of categorical aid and segmenting out the English language learners. As we know, we're looking for equity as a solution here and certainly there are concerns with pulling out a group of students into a subset and putting them in a separate funding mechanism that certainly could potentially limit the equity. And so that certainly is a concern.
I certainly, I certainly share those concerns because then it begs a question, if one seeks to separate out this group of students, what other separations and segregations come next? And why just this as opposed to the other? The other thing that I think is interesting along these lines, tying into your equity observation, Allison, is that tying that to a financial observation, when the education fund makes its disbursements to all the jurisdictions, they don't give you a disbursement for, you know, students coming from poverty or students coming from rural or students coming with ELL. They give you one lump sum total because, and that is a function of the metrics and the calculations. So those who say, well, we need to add some more categorical aid for this particular area because maybe there won't be enough money for that, I personally have a hard time understanding that because again, we're going to get one lump sum total based on those calculations. And if the analysis has been done correctly by the UVM Rutgers study, and it seems to be the best analysis that's available to date, then I think there's a fairly reasonable level of confidence that the total amount will be sufficient, you know, for an equalized or given tax rate. And then it is up to the administration and the boards of the respective school systems to allocate those funds to meet the respective needs. So personally, I think it's a slippery slope. I, I think it does defeat the purposes of equity and, and I'm hoping that they don't go too far down that path. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Recovery update. Mr. Bliss and Ms. Brodowski.
Good evening. Just a quick update for you. I'm Abby Brodowski, Rutland City Public Schools Recovery Coordinator. We are pulling together our meaningful engagement process for ESSER and this week, we will actually be having an online forum on Thursday at 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom conversation where I'll be on the listening end and if community members are interested in talking about how we should be using these funds, you're welcome to do that. And I think there's some information on the website that you can go to the district website to get that link. As of the time that I left my office this afternoon, we have 89 responses. And I've been taking this data and pulling it together and looking to see what the trends are so far and what we've seen. So I've summarized that on the letter to the board. So we have five general areas. So I look at every single piece of information anybody says, tabulate it. And the big areas that we are seeing that people are interested in are operations within the schools and the district, the health and safety of our buildings, hiring in a variety of categories, curriculum, instruction and assessment, and social, emotional learning, engagement and truancy strategies. We have some great ideas coming in, so I just wanted to kind of give you a broad sense of what people seem to be the most interested in around how we spend this ESSER money. Some of these things we're working on, some of them are going to evolve into, you know, further iterations of the plan down the road, but I thought it was important for you guys to kind of be aware of what I'm seeing in very general broad strokes. Also, stay tuned, we, as we move forward, you're going to be receiving some information from us about, we just received concept approval for one of our first projects, which is a carpet removal project for a lot of the school buildings to replace carpet with luxury vinyl tile. So the state said, that's a good idea. Now you can go through the process of actually applying for the money and doing all the hard work to get the money. So we're pretty excited that that was approved and we'll be coming back to you with that as it gets worked out. So just a quick update, you'll see me kind of frequently doing this. Feel free to reach out in between meetings if you need. And if there's no questions, we can move on, but I'm happy to answer any if you have them.
Yes?
I today actually came across a document from the state of Vermont about guidance for ESSER III around COVID. And one of the big, it seemed throughout the entire document, there was a lot of discussion around equity and marginalized populations and how, that are most affected by the pandemic and the pandemic environment. And I don't see that represented on here. And so I was wondering if it could be.
Yeah, there is data that I've received from different population BIPOC, LGBTQ, English language learners, for example, that I have been collecting. These represent the areas that have been totaled as the most quote unquote popular. That doesn't mean that those aren't the only areas we're working on and it doesn't mean it's the only data that's been pulled in. I will say under social, emotional learning, engagement, and truancy, there's a lot of information we have that people have been really creative about how we can be connecting with students, how we can be connecting with students who have been truant and also working with students around the social, emotional lens. And those populations tend to be in that area, but across the board, they are being mentioned, they just may not have risen to the top of like hiring counselors was like at the very top of what people want to be able to do. So these are just kind of the general trends and as the plan evolves, all of that information that people are giving us is what we take into account as we move forward. So if you or anybody else have those particular, you know, ideas in mind, it's absolutely imperative that you fill it out or call me and I'll fill it out for you and make sure that you're part of the effort.
So is that document from the state of Vermont a part of your, of your planning process?
I mean, I've read a lot of those documents. I'm not sure exactly which.
We'll have a draft. It's, it's a draft, so I can share it, share it with you.
Yeah, absolutely. I've read hundreds of pages of state documents to, especially the summer as I first got, got into the role, to prepare myself. And then anytime I'm not quite sure, you know, we go finding answers, we ask the state all the time.
It'd be interesting to see that. You say that's a draft. I can't tell you how many times the documents have changed for each of the three grants. And they're still changing. And so if you have a draft, it, in most senses, it really just doesn't even exist yet. So I'd be interested to see what it is. But as I'm sure you found, there are hundreds of pages for each grant on what's required, what's available and what's possible. And I can be honest and say that people at the state are overwhelmed at this point. One of the leads on the ESSER program has been taken off of it to do the testing. So all of a sudden, she spends, instead of an hour with us every Wednesday, she's there for 20 minutes. Okay, I have to go to test the state program discussion because I'm in charge of that now. So I'd love to see.
Absolutely.
There are a number of drafts that many people can pull from.
Allison?
So kind of on a follow-up to Kathy's, so I understand the survey's out there because the, we need to get public input, we want buy-in, and it's a requirement. But we also have a working plan, I would presume, because if we're talking about, you know, the BIPOC community and minorities being more adversely affected, we're not necessarily going to get survey numbers that rank it up to the top. So I presume we also have a plan that we're working off of and will mesh the two? Is that correct?
Of course, yeah. The plan was the one that was created in the spring. And that's the one that you have a link to. So if you want to go in and take a look, there's three main goals. And I did pull out safe and healthy schools so you could kind of see more specifically the construction and how it folds into the big ones, but the academic achievement, social, emotional learning, and engagement and truancy are those big areas. And under each one, there's at least 10 activities that the school district and the building leaders and the district administration have pulled together to kind of say, this is how we're going to do it, but it's amendable over time. And so in order for us to make good, solid amendments to what we need to do over time, we want to be making sure that we're getting the right information from anybody who wants, you know, wants to say.
Other comments? Questions? Okay. On the study? Yeah.
Well, the Zoom, the Zoom meeting is on the front page. If you go to the Rutland City Public Schools website, it's the first image and opportunity that'll pop up. Betty put it up and she told me that's where you go. So if you go to the front, the front landing page, you should see the Zoom meeting invite.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yes?
Just one more follow-up. Because while I was reading this document, when I was, when I was reading through it, the first thing that just popped into my mind was an equity audit and outside equity audit, which is something that we talked about doing in our equity committee, but financing was an issue. And so in reading this document, I'm thinking there might be a way that we could actually tie the two together.
One of the things we found in the equity work group, and I wrote to Allison about this today, is that when we looked at the, you remember, we looked at a number of consultants and resources for possibly doing an equity audit. No two are alike. All have a different agenda and a different approach to it. And among the consultants that we spoke with, they said, learning's got to be your first move and understanding. So that's why we went with the MAEC survey that we pushed out. Given that was a long survey.
And it was also free.
We got, we got great response from faculty, a small response from students, and we also did a lot of work in terms of looking at the book and the book study that you were involved in. And so as we talked about whether or not to do an equity audit at this time and also learning from our friends at Mill River Union Unified School District, they said, you don't want to run out and do that. It can't be your first move. You got to build your foundation first. You got to build your bureaucracy of what your goals are and understand who you are before you go looking for that. We could do an equity audit today and just as we did a survey, what does our data say? That's easy. And for the team that got together to work on that data for two or three days over the summer, one of the first things we said was, okay, you have to really try to set aside what your agenda is, what you see, what your passion is, and look just at the data. And it's a real struggle to do that, but we're not done with it. So that work is ongoing. And an equity audit could come, a recommendation out of that team, but it hasn't yet. And I'll tell you that I actually proposed an equity audit now, I think, three summers ago. And, you know, through learning and slow moving, just saying like, okay, maybe it wasn't the right thing to run out and do that.
Fisher?
We also want to be careful though, not to be isolating, but integrating people together. We are coming through a pandemic and I think taking care of the basic needs, have our children, you know, math, reading, the basics are really what the focus needs to be at this time is having our children all back into school. I don't think, you know, coming up with specific populations as a whole, everybody moving forward.
One of the things you'll see, like Abby said, and then there's so much you can talk about with this, but that, that first piece about engagement is the most important. If people don't feel engaged, included, that they're offered the dignity of just being who they are in a place they need to be, even your basics aren't going to come forward. So our first move really is, how are we including everybody? So our first move really is, how are we including everybody? I really strongly believe that.
All right. Thank you. We have no need for an executive session tonight.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.